Good morning and welcome to the July 28, 2021 City Council meeting. We will start off with the invocation and Councilman McKeller will introduce our guest, followed by the pledge, if you'll please stand with me.
This morning, Mayor and Councilmen, we have Dr. Edward Robinson. Dr. Robinson is a very eloquent speaker. He's an astute historian and he is a brilliant theologian. And I proudly serve at his congregation, at his feet every single Sunday morning. And so, Dr. Robinson, welcome to our council and we appreciate your invocation. Thank you so much. And Mayor, he's almost as good as my husband. Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. I'm very thankful for the opportunity to serve in the city of Tyler, at the North Tunnahaw Church Christ, as well as at Texas College. And thank you, Mayor, for all the good work that you're doing, along with Mayor Pro Temp and the city council officials. There's a scripture in First Timothy, Chapter 2, beginning with verse 1. First of all, then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all men, for kings, and for all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. So we thank God for you and for all of your work. I'm reminded of a scene from the movie The Help, where Abeline is teaching a little girl, and she says, "You is kind, you is smart, and you is important." And I feel that way about all of you. You are kind, you're smart, and you are important. Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you so much for your many blessings. We thank you for the city of Tyler. We thank you for our mayor, our city council members. We pray your richest blessings upon all of us, and we pray that your peace and tranquility will permeate this community and help us, dear Lord, to love one another as you have loved us. Forgive us of our many sins. We thank you for Jesus, who makes all things possible, even this avenue of prayer. In His name we pray. Let us all together say amen.
And we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
All right, we will start off with the minutes from June the 9th, 2021.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to have a video, but we're going to come down to present the awards at this point. A couple can't make it, but I still would like to acknowledge them. Number one is Todd, how do you pronounce Todd's last name?
Lessidge.
Lessidge. He is budget analyst, internal auditor, 25 years of service. And I wish Todd could be here because he is one of a kind and you would never forget him. But anyway, one of the recognized Todd. We also have Adam Tarrant, a police sergeant, four years, or the fourth, 20 years of service. Thank you, Adam. And we do have another individual that is here, Jay Hudnall, city marshal, 20 years of service. If you could come up. Everybody squeeze in a little. We like each other. And before Jay walks down there, you know, when you think of 65 years of folks that worked for the city, Jay's fabulous. And it's folks like this that mentor the young people that come to work for the city that just make people enjoy police and fire and public safety. So we appreciate you and appreciate your service. We look forward to 20 more years.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Here's one more. Matty, come on up.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name is Madeline Burton. I'm the urban forester for the city of Tyler, and today I'm here to present the Arbor Day Foundation's 2020 Tree City USA Growth Award. The Tree City USA Growth Award is presented by the Arbor Day Foundation to participate in Tree City USA communities that demonstrate higher levels of tree care and community engagement during the calendared year. 2020 events that make the city of Tyler eligible for this award includes Arbor Day celebrations at Faulkner Park and the campuses of University of Texas at Tyler and Tyler Junior College. In addition to Arbor Day events, the city hosted a seedling giveaway, where 3,700 seedlings were given to families to plant on their properties. The city also coordinated with the One Tree Planted nonprofit organization to plant seedlings at several parks around town. There was a total of 50 trees and 2,400 seedlings planted on public property and 106 trees planted on private property. Tyler has held the Tree City USA status for 11 consecutive years, and this is our sixth year in a row to receive the Growth Award. On behalf of myself and the Tyler Trees Committee, we would like to thank the mayor and council for supporting our tree planting endeavors. It is my recommendation that city council accept the 2020 Tree City USA Growth Award from the Arbor Day Foundation.
Anybody involved, y'all come up here. Come on, come here.
Hey, I want to know if there's anything about the tree plant. That's also kind of interesting.
Are there people here from the trees committee? Y'all come up here too. Squeeze in. You know, I really do, I really do want to thank the trees committee and everybody that's involved in this. We got everybody? Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right, we've got three zoning items, and Kyle, it's all yours.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This first request is a zone change request from R1B, single-family residential, to R2, two-family residential. This is located in Council District Number 2. The applicant's requesting the zone change to bring the existing duplex into compliance with the code. The adjacent properties are a mixture of single-family lots to the northwest and south, and then to the east, there are some undeveloped lots, and some commercial property to the south and southeast. This request would amend the future land use guide from, I'm sorry, from single-family to single-family and single-family attached, medium-high density, since it would be a duplex. Like I said, the applicant's requesting to bring the duplex into conformance. The property to the south is currently a non-conformant commercial property, and then to the property to the southeast, there is also a commercial property. So you do see a mixture of land uses in the area. Of the notices that were sent, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. The plan and zoning commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This next request is a request for a closure of an unapproved alley. This alley is adjacent to these lots here, and the applicant is requesting to abandon the alley to incorporate into their lots, to allow for more space to develop some of the properties. Of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan and zoning commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
I do. Kyle, why don't we condemn the whole thing? Does it have to be requested to be condemned? Or the entire alleyway?
Yeah, the other adjacent properties would have to sign with that application.
Thank you.
So with the closure of this, that would, you know, be a likely scenario when they come to do that.
Got you. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Z3.
Next request is a zone change from R1A, single-family residential, to R2, two-family residential district, and this is in Council District Number 3. The applicant's requesting the zone change for the ability to develop a duplex on the property. They do have two lots on this, or they do have two lots they're requesting to change. The ability to develop duplexes will depend on how much street frontage they can have for each lot that they create. It looks like they may be able to get one additional developable lot for one duplex. The adjacent properties to the north are currently undeveloped. To the east are Zone R1A and RMH for manufactured housing, and are developed with single-family homes. And the properties to the south are Zone R2, two-family, and so this is just like those properties. And then to the west is currently undeveloped, but is owned for single-family homes. This request would amend the future land use guide from single-family medium-low density to single-family and single-family medium-high density. And the city of Tyler, Texas College Area Development Plan, which was adopted in 2010, notes that this specific area lacks diversity in housing products, and town home or duplex products would benefit this area. So this is in keeping with that plan or the recommendations of the Texas College Plan. And this zone change will also allow for the development of two additional residential units in the north end, which is consistent with the Tyler first plan. Of the seven notices that were, or of the 34 notices sent, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the change, and the plan and zoning commission by a seven-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Yes. What was the reason of the opposing?
Oh, there was no opposition.
Oh, no, you said no opposition. Okay. Move to approve, Z3.
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kyle, since you're up here, and since there's so many people here regarding O2, are you guys okay if we just pull O2 up and do a little bit out of order?
Sure.
Are you prepared to start with O2?
Okay. So this next item is a request that the city council consider clarifying and amending regulations related to solar energy devices, so as to provide for regulation only to the extent permitted by state law. Now, I'll get into what the current ordinance says and what recent changes in state law and what that means for our city code. And so, currently, the, within the Unified Development Code, or the UDC, the regulations are for solar, residential solar installations, and it requires that they must be situated so that they are screened from view from public streets. This regulation was adopted in 2012. Since that time, you know, as things have changed, as we've had more desire for solar panels and the way they are applied, at least in residential areas, there has been some push to clarify at least the ordinance, and then also with the recent change in state law, which was SB 398, which was signed by Governor Abbott in, it was past month, or last June. And that law will become effective on September 1st, which it does preempt cities from prohibiting or restricting the installation of solar energy devices, which are solar panels, except to the extent that the property owners' associations may restrict the devices. And so, that is saying that cities cannot restrict the installation of solar panels except in the way that a POA or HOA could already do that under the law, which is in the property code. And so, those restrictions or those conditions that are already set forth in the law are, I have detailed here. And so, what they say is that the restrictions found in the property code wouldn't pertain to cities, and they state that the solar devices may be restricted if the device has not, or I'm sorry, threatens public safety or violates the law, and that'd be adjudicated by a court. If that device is located on a property that is not owned by the property owner, so requiring that they own the property and put the device on it, that the device is located in an area on a property other than the roof or fenced in yard. And so, that would require that the solar panel have to be on the roof of the homeowner's property, or in a yard that's fenced in, as opposed to an open yard. If the device is mounted on the roof of the home, and it would be restricted if the device extends higher than the, higher than or beyond the roof line. I do have pictures of this that I'll show. Higher than or above the roof line, if it does not conform to the slope of the roof, or has an edge that is not parallel to the roof line, or has a frame, and these are situations where the device would be restricted, has a frame or support bracket or piping that would be, or that is not silver, bronze, or black tone, which is commonly available in the marketplace. Those colors are pretty typical. And then also, if the device is located in a fenced-in yard, and it is taller than the fence line, so that's saying that the device would be restricted if it extends above the fence line. So that's kind of a screening requirement there. And then number six is if the device would be restricted if it avoids any material warranties as installed, so if it's not installed according to the specs or the safety component. So this is an example of what would be allowed under state law. This is kind of what cities cannot prohibit, would be if it's roof-mounted, and it conforms to the slope of the roof, as you see there, and it does not extend above the roof line or, and is parallel with the roof line. So this installment here would be something that cities can no longer, at least as of September 1st, prohibit. And then also, the ground-mounted, it would have to be behind, or in a fenced yard, and if it's in a fenced yard and does not extend above the roof line, then cities can no longer prohibit this installment either. As the, without any changes to the ordinance, the current language in the UDC would not be enforceable after September 1st, as it places a restriction on the location of solar panels. That was not previously mentioned. So the current restrictions that we have in the code are not, were not listed in that list of things that can be restricted. So without any changes, as of September 1st, the current language would not be enforceable. And so, and I also wanted to mention that the criteria listed will allow for any of the recent requests that we've received, and that may be pending because of the current ordinance. They all appear to comply with these criteria, so if those were to be changed, then they could be approved. And so, it's recommended at this point to be, in order to be consistent with the upcoming change in state law, it's recommended that city council adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 10, the UDC, to clarify that solar panels are not subject to, clarify, first, that they're not subject to mechanical screening. They are currently in that section of the code, which could create some confusion. So to remove that from that section on mechanical screens, and then also to add the sixth criteria that I listed before, and I can go back to them, add those to the code as to the criteria in which solar panels may be installed. And so, essentially, what we're talking about today is that we do have criteria listed in the state law that cities can adopt to be consistent with that, and those are the preemptions. So the cities can be less restrictive, yeah, less restrictive than that, but it can't be any more restrictive, and so the current ordinance that we have is more restrictive than the state law. And so, it's recommended that we adopt these changes.
Can you expand on homeowners association again? Like you say, Holly Tree. Can people in Holly Tree have solar panels on the front of their house facing the street?
They can, because they fall under the current restriction in state law, the same criteria that we have here, so long as those solar panels aren't flush-mounted and they're not extending above the roof line, the HOA cannot restrict the installation of it. So they can't be any more restrictive than that. So an HOA cannot require them to be moved, you know, they can be on the front of the house.
Before we do these cards, I want to make a comment first, but does anybody else have any questions for Kyle?
Kyle, I have a question. On the proposed change, the underlying on the ordinance, it just listed Section 202.010. Does Section D need to be added to the end of that, or is it the entirety of 202.010? D is listed on that page, but on the previous page it was not, right there at the bottom.
Section B?
Yeah. Because on the next page, 202.010, Section D is listed, but right there on the proposed change, Section D is not listed. Does that need to be added there?
Yeah, it can be, to be clear that that is what we're referring to.
Okay. Maybe.
I'll go back. Because we're fine with adding numbers and letters all day long until the city attorney tells us that we screwed it up. It's referencing Section 202.010-D. That's what the law references.
Correct.
We don't have the D in, at least on here. It may be in the ordinance, but it's on.
No, I'm going to need, I'll need to look at that and make sure that that was, some parts of the state law that allowed HOAs to do more
Right.
than what we are saying as a city regulatory entity that we were
Correct.
recommending. And I'm not certain if D was one of those. I need to look at it.
It is under, now therefore, is under Part 2, and this might be kind of what you're referencing and kind of what Kyle's going to, as far as the specifics, it's actually in the ordinance. It does reference as far as Division D screening is hereby amended by adopting a new Section 10, 346, to read as follows. So it may be addressed in here. Do you copy that?
Maybe that's too detailed of a question for this discussion.
Kyle, would you walk that over to Cassandra? That's what you're referring to.
Correct.
It doesn't say that in the, yeah.
Correct.
So just to clarify that, not, everything under 202, that one section doesn't apply, only D would apply.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Give us a second while Deborah reads.
B1, and then it says property owners association, under Section 202.010-D177. The, what we have is written for, it had the D.
Okay.
But that's the reference in law, so that's all we need.
That's correct. Okay. Then yes, well.
What we're trying to achieve is just adopt what this is.
But just for clarification, the question I asked a minute ago about an HOA.
Yeah.
Can an HOA, or can an HOA not prohibit solar panels on the front of the house?
They can, they have the ability, if they can, if they have a restriction on the location, the law allows them, or allows the applicant or the owner to demonstrate that that location reduces the effectiveness of that solar panel by more than 10%. If they can demonstrate that, which I think is an easy thing to do, then they can have it wherever they need to have. So the
There is an exception.
There's an exception. If they demonstrate that, you know, if an HOA says it has to be on the back of the house, and the applicant demonstrates that that impacts the effectiveness of it by more than 10%, or the input or output, then they can't be restricted. So then they can have it wherever they need to have it, yeah. And that may, I think that's an easy thing to prove up, that the 10%, you know, if you require it on the back or side of the house, it's easy to show that that impacts it by more than 10%. So there is that ability in the law for property owners' associations. The, what's being adopted is anything that can be related just to a city. And so, the law is specific to property owners' associations to have that ability, but it may not apply to cities. but it may not apply to cities.
But what you're saying is the law is, is state law that's going to go into effect on September the first?
Yes.
Okay.
To make sure though, if council was to pass this ordinance today, it goes into effect pretty much immediately upon codification, so probably, you know, at the end of this week.
Okay. Anybody else have a question for Kyle? Just to go back a little ways, now I don't remember how long ago this was, we, we had this item on the UDC for adoption. Anyway, this, this was on the agenda and, and we discussed a number of things to be adopted on the Unified Development Code, and one of them being this issue with the solar panels. And at the time, we, we pulled it off of the item for a vote. So, it was just pulled. And so, at the time, we, we did not vote to deny the solar panel or, or anything of that nature. The purpose of, of us taking it off at that time was so that not only could we discuss this with our constituents, but so that people in the community could discuss it amongst themselves. Because the, it was complicated, and so we really did want to allow the community to, to discuss it. Well, in the meantime, with the legislation passing this into law, you know, effective September the first, our ability to, to deny solar panels is, is gone. Not that we would have. We're not, I don't think any of us are anti-solar, but for those of you that are here to, to speak and try to convince us to approve solar panels on the front of your house, that's already taken place based on this legislation. So, I'm more than happy to call all these people up to speak, but, but what you're speaking to is already.
It's going to be approved.
It's, it's going to be, it's, it's there. And so, our, our action today is, is not to approve, it is to approve solar panels, but it would be effective it, this week versus September the first. So, it's a lot less, it's better for you guys that want solar panels than it was. So, we'll go ahead and call these folks.
Yvonne and Rudy Wright from the State address.
Yvonne and Rudy Wright, do y'all wish to come up and speak?
Maybe.
And if you can just state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Yvonne Wright, 12863 County Road 192 in Tyler.
Three minutes.
That's okay.
Three minutes. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. My name's Yvonne Wright. I own Right Way Solar Technologies. We're a solar installer here in Tyler. We actually install panels all over the entire state of Texas, but being partial to Tyler, because we live here, we are pretty passionate about having the ability to do that here. I prepared a statement, which made it clear there's no order necessary for me to read, but I do want to reiterate, we are here for a reason. We are here because permits are being denied in the city of Tyler, specifically since your March meeting. This is an example of two permits we applied for in Tyler. This one was approved, this one was not, less than three months apart for the exact same system. So, it is clear to me that perhaps up until this meeting, Tyler has been against having solar. A few things I will say, just cherry picking from my statement, the HOA law cannot restrict. You asked a question about having the panels on the front of the house. Absolutely, yes. The new law allows for having the panels on the front of the house. There is a caveat in the bottom of the law that says the HOA can restrict where you put them, provided you don't have more than 10% of power loss. By taking the panels off the south side of the roof, whichever that is, front side or back, if you move them from the south side of the roof, you automatically lose 15% of your production. And that's why the law's written that way. So, if the south side of the roof faces the street, then absolutely you can install solar panels, and they will face the street. They exist in the city of Tyler right now, they exist all over the state. It seems to me that's an aesthetic reason. There's no health and safety issue, there's no threat to the public safety having a solar panel on the front of your house. It doesn't detract from your property values, it actually adds to your property values. And I think it makes your city a more attractive place for people to want to move to, because not only are you providing for your own energy independence, most of the systems that we install overproduce when the sun is out. And when we overproduce electricity, we're actually dumping that back into the grid, which is only helping to supplement AirPods grid, which only ends up being good for everybody. So, I won't waste a lot of your time. I appreciate you putting this back on the agenda. That, I will also admit, has been another extremely stressful and frustrating thing for me in my office. I think we've been trying to get the attention of this council for two or three months now. I, I really would highly recommend at some point that the council consider having either an open floor for new business or a means for the public to adjust grievances with the council. There doesn't seem to be one in place right now.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments or questions for Ms. Wright? Does Mr. Wright? If you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rudy Wright, 12863 County Road 192, Tyler, Texas. I'm here today not just behalf, on behalf of solar and solar installers, but, you know, really on behalf of natural rights, property rights, and freedom in general. When I went back and I watched the videos of what happened this year and solar, you know, almost getting a little bit of leniency from the city, it was heartbreaking to see how cavalier it was just struck off unanimously recommended from y'all's committee to be modified, and yet y'all just didn't do it. And since then, I've lost hundreds of thousands of dollars in sales. I literally have customers that I either need to write a refund check today after this meeting, or thank you very much for the sounds like I might get to proceed with the project that had been in the works for over a year. I would have never dreamed that my own hometown would be restricting renewable energy, much less blocking people from earning a living. I, like I said, literally have been denied putting food on, food on my table because of this. And just even how we're dealing with our permits. In 2008, when I did my first systems in the city of Tyler, it was $35. I walked the inspector through what we were doing, where all the safety measures were. It was a painless, painless process. At this point, I have spent as much as $2,500 trying to satisfy the demands of the city. I've literally had to get a permission from the Lake Authority and a site survey of the entire property in order to put solar panels on a man's boat house. We should not be looking to have the maximum authority the law allows over our citizens and our neighbors. I suggest we strike the solar regulation altogether, because there are other means to deal with somebody trying to get overly creative. I understand nobody wants to see some erector sit in their neighbor's backyard, but arguably, if the neighbor's paying his taxes and he paid his mortgage, he's the one's got to look at it more than anybody else. But, again, I would urge the council, please, don't try and keep us under the tightest leash the state law allows, and give us our freedom to capture the sun's energy, whether that's growing plants, or growing power for our battery system, or helping maintain our stable grid. In, in closing, had I not been blessed with getting a call from the local news about the brownouts on the day I was coming to meet with your chief planner about why in the world they were just now starting to deny my permits and it wasn't even on the front of the house? If that hadn't happened, and we hadn't garnered public support, and we had not gotten on Agenda Idol, a right that we acquired basically through the Magna Carta in 1215 has been erased apparently in 2020 in Tyler, Texas. Because had we not been on the agenda, I would not have been able to petition for redress of this grievance. So, I appreciate the public support and hope in making this happen, but I'm very devastated that it's had to take this to earn a right to have solar in Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Appreciate your remarks.
Mr. Greg.
Hey, Greg.
If you state your name and address for the record, please.
I will. Good morning. Mayor, council, city manager, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Greg Grab. I live on Chilton Avenue. I am actually an oil and gas guy who's speaking in favor of solar. And I wanted to look at it from a perspective not of how much can we prohibit, or how can we prohibit, but how can we encourage? Besides the fact of that new state law, that's the 398 prohibiting local restrictions, it seems to me the residential solar energy is a strategy that we should all be supporting. It checks off all the boxes. It reduces demand on our overstressed electric power grid, hopefully minimizing the likelihood of mandatory curtailments or grid failure even. It's good for the environment, generating clean electric power with no emissions. It creates local jobs and encourages businesses to provide the expertise, equipment, and services in support of this new technology. It supports local property owners, allowing them to choose to invest in and modernize their residences to increase property values and lower monthly expenses. And it continues the atmosphere of minimizing regulation and maximizing individual freedoms, which is certainly a source of pride in this community. So, if we are discussing, discussing the revision to the UDC, seems to me a first step would be to strike the sentence that restricts the installation of residential solar devices, and I'm not sure additional prohibitions need to be put into place, but that's up to your judgment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grab. Last card.
Richard Blake.
Richard Blake. Hello, Mr. Blake. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Richard Blake, 5099 West Twin Lakes Drive in Tyler, Texas. Since you've obviously resolved this issue at this point, according to your words, I'm just sorry that it possibly took the state legislature passing a law to get that rescinded. But anyway, so I'll take my time to maybe address future issues that deal with property rights. Federal government has been usurping its constitutional authority for decades, and it seems to now have hit warp speed attempting to micromanage every aspect of people's lives. Here in Austin, Texas, they seem to be trying to out usurp Washington DC. So, this morning I posed the question, what is the role of government? In the early days of this country, government entities were formed through the consent of the people, granting these entities the authority to act on their behalf to protect their individual inalienable rights to life, liberty, and property. You, as elected officials, took an oath to uphold and defend those constitutionally protected inalienable rights. No person has the authority to violate another's rights against that person's will or without the permission. And by extension, no individual or individuals can cede violation of those rights to another person or groups of people, i.e. the government. If an individual can't do it, government is precluded from doing it. Once governments are allowed to control and/or regulate what an individual can do with their own property, then this inalienable right has been violated and can become subject to the whims of future elected officials. In this case, one person cannot go to their neighbor and demand that they not install solar panels on their house. Thus, that person cannot demand that government entity prevent their neighbor from doing so. If today it's disallowing visible roof-mounted solar panels, tomorrow it could be dictating roof design, shingle or brick colors, also known as the slippery slope. I'm not privy to the reason behind the code in the first place, but maybe most of you weren't either, but it does beg the question, was the council flooded with citizen complaints? And if so, why did it suddenly start being enforced some four months ago after being on the books since 2012? Given the recent winter crisis of the Texas grid failure and the ongoing requests from power companies to conserve energy during extreme summer temperatures, I find it incomprehensible that the council would want to thwart an individual's effort to become less dependent on grid power and allow, by allowing the code to remain. Continuing to enforce this code would seem to have placed aesthetics over energy conserv- conservation. Why would you want to force solar companies, in order to do business in Tyler, incur extra costs for structural engineer reports and the added cost of visual behaviors, barriers? My time's up. Why would you want to continue this restriction, restriction, and more importantly, this egregious violation of a basic right to one's property? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. If we can take like a five-minute recess, I would like for, no?
No, fine. Sounds actually.
What I, what I'd like is, is, is if Kyle and Deborah can just visit for a minute to make sure that there's not any question as to what we're doing regarding.
The wording.
The wording in this, because I don't, I don't want us to do something wrong. I want to make sure this is right. So, can we take a five-minute recess?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Combatting the spread of pathogens at the airport. This is pretty straightforward. It does not require any city or airport match. It's just a grant that we can use over the next four years for those types of expenses. So I'll provide the recommendation that the city council consider adopting a resolution ratifying acceptance of the application and consent to accepting the grant upon receipt for FAA grant three dash forty-eight dash zero two one five dash five zero dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars to fund the operating expenses at our Tyler Pounds Regional Airport.
Any questions for Steve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. R two.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, R two again provides additional funding over the course of the next four years, once again part of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, you're here to refer to this, uh, much smaller amount. This provides relief to the team of fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars specifically designed to assist our concessionaires. Uh, basically, these funds again do not require any matching from the city or the airport, and the funds are committed to relieving rent and minimum annual guarantees proportionally to our on-airport car rental and in-terminal concessionaires. The recommendation then becomes to recommend that the city council consider adopting a resolution ratifying acceptance of the application and consent to accepting the grant upon receipt for FAA grant three dash forty-eight dash zero two one five dash four seven dash twenty twenty-one for funds totaling fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars to assist our concessionaires at Tyler Pounds Regional Airport by relieving rent and minimum annual guarantees.
Any questions for Steve?
More money, approve.
Yes, sir.
Motion by McGee.
Second.
Second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great interview.
Thank you, Steve. Renissa. Oh, one.
That's not Renissa.
Renissa.
That was good.
I have some pink and green for you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Prentice Butler. I'm the Housing Manager, uh, for Neighborhood Services. I'm before you today, uh, requesting that you approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Family Self-Sufficiency and Housing Choice Voucher Annual Plans. The United States Housing and Urban Development Housing Choice Voucher Program is a federally-funded program designed to assist very low-income families, the elderly, and disabled members of the community to afford decent, safe, and sanitary housing in the private market. All agencies that receive federal funds are required to submit annual housing, uh, administrative plans. Uh, this plan actually describes the approach to managing the particular program and providing input, uh, on the services for the upcoming year. The first part of this process, uh, Neighborhood Services Personnel reviews its administrative plans, uh, along with the, uh, Family Self-Sufficiency Plan, uh, to make changes for the upcoming year that are in the best interest of the participants in the community. We are required to have a residential advisory board that's comprised of not only housing choice voucher participants, but also family self-sufficiency participants. Uh, we meet with them in order for them to also provide their input on what they would like to see in the upcoming annual plan. We did have a virtual meeting, uh, with the residential advisory board on May the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. We're also required to have a forty-five day comment period that allows the community also provide input on the agency's plan. Uh, that comment period opened on April twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, and ran through May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, we did have two virtual public hearings, uh, that were both held on May the nineteenth. We had one in the morning, we had one in the evening. We had one public comment during the comment period from a citizen who requested that we actually, uh, initiate a manual process of selecting participants from our waiting list, uh, as opposed to the computer-generated system. Uh, the housing, uh, personnel did decide to continue using the lottery computer system, which was a lot fairer approach to selecting individuals from the waiting list. And they also had a request to use program funds to build affordable housing for low-income families near, uh, hospitals and banks. Uh, our funding really strictly for housing assistance payments, but we are working with the Community Development Block Grant to actually help to, uh, increase the housing stock for lower and moderate income individuals. Uh, the next step, and the final step is to receive approval of the agency's plan and to submit the required plans and certifications to HUD. Any questions?
Any questions for Prentice?
Will approve everyone.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please, Prentice.
Thank you.
M one. Hello, Ms. Wade.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Council, um, Mr. Manager. My name is Renissa Wade, Managing Director here at the City of Tyler. I'm before you today to discuss the final acceptance of the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program funding, and to, um, have you all to authorize our submission to HUD on the city's behalf. I was before you on July fourteenth, and I gave a more in-depth presentation regarding this particular subject, so I won't go that deeply today. I do want to remind you all and the public that this funding is to be used for infrastructure, decent and affordable housing, reducing substandard structures, as well as addressing homelessness. Um, we did follow the guides that were provided for us by HUD and had our proper public hearings. Actually, we had an additional public hearing on the July fourteenth date, and our public comment period did last for thirty days as mandated. We did not have any comments during those public hearings or during those comment periods. We did have a couple outside of the comment periods, and they were considered as a part of the plan. The city was awarded eight-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars for CDBG, um, and three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty dollars for home. The allocations that staff has recommended are on your screen, and they haven't changed since the last, um, presentation, and this is the present, this is the amount that we're wanting to submit to HUD. Um, our next step is for the final approval today, and for staff to move forward with the submission to HUD. Are there any questions?
Questions for Renissa?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Renissa. Kate?
Good morning, Mayor.
Are you our Water Intel News Director?
Yes, yes, I am.
Welcome.
Sandra, do you know where? Where do I go? At the bottom. That's great, thank you very much. Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Kate Deeds, Director of Utilities for the City of Tyler. Um, the item before you, M two, is a new lease agreement for Camp Tyler, um, at Lake Tyler. So Camp Tyler's leased approximately a hundred and eighteen point six acres from the City of Tyler at Lake Tyler for over seventy years. Um, they give outdoor education opportunities to area schoolchildren. So the most recent lease, uh, that was executed with Camp Tyler was in nineteen eighty-four for a thirty-year term, uh, so about since two thousand and fourteen, uh, that has been on a year-to-year basis renewal. So right now Camp Tyler's currently working to fund improvements, uh, to programs and student accommodations, and so they've requested that a new lease for a thirty-year term, uh, be approved, uh, so they can help with those funding opportunities. So I'm here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a new lease agreement with Camp Tyler for use of two tracts of City of Tyler property at Lake Tyler. One tract is approximately a hundred acres, and the other tract is approximately eighteen point six acres.
Any questions for Kate? Yeah, I will say, go ahead.
Oh, do you want to introduce, um, Bud?
Yes, yes, and Bud, I also, Bud came to, uh, to help out in, if he did have any questions, um, regarding the improvements that they're planning to make. He's with Camp Tyler Foundation, President of Camp Tyler Foundation.
I don't have any questions, but I will say, I went to Camp Tyler in the fifth grade. I guess that's where all the kids go, at fifth grade. And it's, it's a great experience, and I don't know how many people in this room went to Camp Tyler when they were in the fifth grade.
I did, but I've never been back, so I think I need to go.
But it really is, it's such a positive experience for the kids. It's such a positive experience for the kids that I'm, I'm excited that this is before us and that we can extend this lease and let it happen for many more years, so thank you for what you do.
Oh, thank y'all. You know, we really appreciate your support, and, you know, we're working hard, and we do to raise the money that we need to bring it back to what it was said five years ago. We were gonna have to have a extended lease, and it's working. Uh, we're in about four, a little over four-hundred-thousand dollars in budget in general, but we're moving forward.
Good. Well, we, we appreciate you, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve M two.
Okay.
Uh, motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M three.
So M three is related to the Glenwood Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation. Um, this tank is a five-hundred-thousand-gallon elevated storage tank, uh, on North Glenwood Boulevard in Gaston, right across from Fun Forest. And it's been identified through the years through annual inspections as in need of rehab. In August, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, uh, the city council authorized an engineering contract with KSA engineers for the design of the rehab. This project includes recoding of the interior and exterior of the tank, as well as replacement of internal and external, uh, steel components that have been identified in need of repair. The project was publicly advertised, and bids were open July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. There were ten bidders. The lowest bidder was Utility Service Company of Georgia at a cost of work of one million, forty-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. So I'm here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Utility Service Company, Inc., for the rehabilitation of the Glenwood Elevated Storage Tank in the amount of one million, forty-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Kate, were there several people that bid on this?
Yes, there were, there were ten bidders.
So what was, what was the high bid?
Um, let me tell you. High bid was one million, six-hundred-and-twenty dollars, one million, six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. That was the high bid.
It's a pretty big spread.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any questions for Kate?
Just this company, have they done business with the city before?
They have not, but they be, they come recommended by KSA. KSA has worked with them, um, but they, their qualifications and financials have also been vetted, and so they are now on our approved contractors list.
Great, thank you. Then I move to approve M three.
Second. Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kate. On my sheet, I have Heather, but I guess you're not Heather. Davis, welcome.
Uh, yes, good morning. My name's Davis Dixon, I'm a Antrim, HACSEN Sales Tax, uh, Project Manager. And, um, so today is my request is to consider adopting the HACSEN Sales Tax twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two annual work program and the corporate budget that goes with it. Kind of give you a little bit of a, a history here that, uh, each year that the HACSEN Sales Tax Board, they will develop an annual work program with a budget, in turn will recommend that to the city council. So on July the thirteenth, this was reviewed by the HACSEN Sales Tax Board, and then that's why we're here today. Uh, each annual work program will include both projects planned for next year and those that are currently going this year that will carry over into the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So first of all, the new projects, and a lot of those are traffic-related projects, the Highway Safety Improvement Program. So the next series of projects, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about either signal improvements with corridors or pedestrian crossings. This first one is at Gentry Parkway. You see there about nine intersections that will include, uh, communication improvements, vehicle detection improvements, traffic signal and pedestrian crossing improvements. The good thing is, uh, Cameron Williams, our traffic engineer, he, uh, has been, uh, I think, done a real good job in trying to look at what TechStop may offer as far as the federal and state grants to accompany these projects. So in turn, the local share would be much less just because of these grants. And so you can see here kind of a breakdown of city obligation, TechStop obligation, federal obligation, and so the city's match is somewhat less than what the whole project would be. So in this case, as far as the construction, the city would not have an obligation, it would be primarily just for the engineering. The second would be, Eric South Broadway, Robert E. Lee Drive, a signal reconstruction project, and again, you can see that in this case, TechStop and the federal share would take care of the construction portion of it, but the city doing, only doing the engineering. Um, this one is at Martin Luther King Boulevard at North Broadway, again, a signal and pedestrian improvement project. In this case, it's not really on a state road, so there is some obligation here with the city being, uh, participating in some of the construction at about ten percent, but still this leverages our HACSEN Sales Tax funding to get a lot more done. And, um, the next one would be the New Copeland Road Corridor Signal and Pedestrian Improvement Project, again, not on a city facility, I mean, a state facility, so there would be some city obligation there of ten percent of construction and the engineering costs. And then, um, this one, a small contribution, I guess, for, uh, for a nice project there at, uh, North Broadway, twenty-sixth, they kind of give you an idea of that location. You have Griffin Elementary, uh, some church, some churches in that area, a lot of pedestrian traffic potential there, so this is a good project, still under that Highway Safety Improvement Program. Uh, the next project I'd like to talk about is at, uh, at, uh, Grandi Boulevard at, uh, Old Noonday Road, and to kind of give you an orientation there, on the left side of your screen on the west is Highway one fifty-five, and, uh, we're going east, and you'll, if you've driven that segment, there's an area where there's a flashing yellow light. It's really a, an intersection that draws a lot of concern, so this is one project we propose initiating to. And that would again be in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. And on this one, this is more of a, really a ten-year program. Of course, what we're doing in twenty-one, twenty-two, I want to kind of share with you a little bit what that could mean as far as in the ten-year window of time. There's a, a number of different improvements that are part of the citywide traffic study. So in years one and two, you see an outline of some of those projects with schools-owned flasher systems, upgrades in, uh, communication, traffic signal equipment upgrades, and that estimated cost would be just, uh, just over one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars. But then that kind of kickstarts into years three and six, and again, more upgrades and remodeling the traffic management center, a number of, of, of projects that can total up to about six million, three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Now, keep in mind, each of these projects will be brought back to the city council for individual projects, first of all, through the HACSEN Sales Tax to be sure that, you know, they approve the funding, then to the HACSEN Sales Tax, or city council. But I kind of want to make you aware, with these budgets starting in twenty-one, twenty-two, or these projects, it'll initiate more work just down the road. And then, finally, in years seven through ten, you can see an estimated cost of seven million, one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars, and that's continuing that program with travel, uh, traffic signal, equipment upgrades, a number of improvements in the traffic system. The next item would be is for the, uh, the Rose Convention Center development, and one of the obligations would be is a three-point-two-five-million transfer of funds for that project in twenty-one, twenty-two, and that's shown in the ten-year program for twenty-one, twenty-two, and then again in twenty-two and twenty-three. And then on, uh, West Grandi Boulevard, the S curve there just west of the Holly Tree area and east of, uh, Old Jacksonville Highway, that is another project that's being shown in the ten-year forecast that was recommended by HACSEN for, uh, study and improvements there in that S curve area where there have been some safety concerns in the past. And the estimated cost there is one-point-five million. And here's another one of the programs where we talk about the cost of about two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, but then that leads into other, uh, programs, uh, going out to twenty-five, uh, FY, uh, FY twenty-five, twenty-six, and that's the Roy Road Improvement Project. And really what this budget shows for FY twenty-one, twenty-two would be more of the engineering side of it, and to kind of give you an idea, you can see that Roy Road from, uh, Rome's Quarter, it's, there, to the west, is, uh, quite a bit of development going on in that area, so with, uh, this Cumberland School, High School, I believe it is, through there, there's a lot of potential, and I think there are even some proposals of some new development. This, this program would initially take that, uh, high, or that segment of road, widen it, what, storm sewer improvements, utility improvements, sort of kind of back up to that, you can see that overall that program could run to about twelve million, five-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand. But to get started would be the engineering next year. I missed one.
Can't believe you lost that one out.
No, better not miss that one. And then finally, the reconstruction of Taxi Way A or Alpha. Again, you know, with a HACSEN Sales Tax Program, that has helped the airport throughout the years with being able to compete for those federal grants, and many of those have been ninety-ten grants where the, the federal participation's ninety percent. This is what's budgeted for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget in HACSEN Sales Tax is to be able to cover that HACSEN, or that ten percent local share. That would be really one of the last, next to the last major tax rate projects, 'cause in the past, we've been able to, to deal with most, all of the tax rate projects except the one on the east side, and that may be a potential for future. But with tax rate Alpha that completes getting all the fixed base operators, a good connectivity of that primary runway with good pavement, and it would be that pavement section that we used on our runway four-two-two, that primary runway. So having that, uh, local share included in this proposed budget would probably allow, uh, the airport to, to compete for some federal funds. Now, I mentioned to you that there, the twenty-twenty-one projects, there's about twenty-four tolling, uh, projects totaling an estimated eighteen-point-two-three million dollars that we would see carry over into that twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Many of those are in streets and traffic, drainage, parks in the airport. So our forecast on the budget would be ending with a cash balance this year of just over seventeen million, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand dollars. Anticipate revenues coming in at sixteen million, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, with the expenditures that are planned, both in the, uh, in the FY twenty-one, twenty-two year, would, it would be eighteen million, five-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, eighty-seven dollars, leaving, uh, and also want to include that transfer that I mentioned about the, the Rose Complex, that three-point-two-five million. And that leaves, uh, leaves us with an end fund balance for twenty-one, twenty-two at just over eleven million, six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, based on the ten-year projections. And you'll see that, um, if you look at that ten-year window, we, we try to maintain that fund balance pretty close. So I, as I mentioned earlier, on July thirteenth, the HACSEN Sales Tax Board approved this proposed budget annual plan, and now I bring this to you. If it's approved today, then our bylaws require that there'll be a sixty-day period where the public can have, you know, uh, feedback, uh, or review session there. Any questions?
Any questions for Davis?
I've got one, not on the approval of this, but hat, on the pedestrian, uh, I guess, traffic.
Cross, cross one, thank you.
Uh, how does, uh, a site get up for consideration on that? 'Cause I've got one in mind that, at, uh, Shiloh and Highway one-ten South, that residents crossing over to usually Walmart there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, are basically having to run across Highway one-ten back and forth, and it's, every time I see it, I think, oh, this is terrible.
I'd like to add one of those.
Yeah, for consideration to be, yeah.
I, I would say, if, if you can, send me or, or Cameron Williams an email about it, then we would go right out to invest it, probably Cameron, to, to go ahead and investigate carefully, and, um, it's not, ju, it's not to say that we can't add those types of programs within that FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Okay.
And that one especially, that's, sometimes like you're talking about, that was on Highway one-ten, so you've got TechStop that actually controls that. Which, we can work with them, and they've, they've actually been very receptive on looking at for, uh, if they're even funding for stuff that's off the system for, um, uh, where there might be some opportunities for improvement.
Okay, I'll send you something on that.
Any other questions for Davis?
I do. Davis, how many projects are on the HACSEN Sales Tax?
That, that list?
Yes, sir.
There are about a hundred and ninety.
And the dollar value, do you know the, the total dollar value?
I don't know for those hundred and ninety, I don't. And, you know, it would, it'd be hard to really even estimate it with it being such a long term.
So if you're past item number ten, it's gonna be a while before you think it's addressed.
And, you know, what I've learned, I tell you, I'm still in the learning curve here, and I'm learning that some of those projects of a hundred and ninety, let's not, also, don't forget that some of those can also capture others where one, or maybe four turns into one, and, um, so that's what I'm learning where if we, if it makes sense where we can save some mobilization, I hope to see that we can do that.
Yeah, Cambridge is a great example of that, where you have Cambridge, which is its own project, that there's what, about three drainage projects, um, also that are part of that, that kind of get included, um, and so, and some of those, especially towards the bottom, are kind of individual projects that sometimes get nominated by citizens or other people who are just, you know, here's something to put on there, and we take a look at it, and it gets added on. Well, the reason for my question is, is I just wanted to, uh, first commend the HACSEN Sales Tax Board and, and you on, it, it, it's a tremendous amount of research and work that goes into qualifying, prioritizing projects off that list. It, it's monumental task, there's no doubt about it, but also, too, to let the citizens know just what the great need is for infrastructure projects, uh, in our community, and then the dollar amount that it takes, it puts a lot of stress and strain, takes a lot of management within the HACSEN Sales Tax Board to bring those projects to fruition, so, that's all I wanted to do, is just mainly make everyone aware. Uh, with that, I move to approve M four.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, now for the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. City managers report.
Mayor and Council, just a few items of note. You know, as, as we are enjoying this wonderful weather and the opportunity to get out in our parks, just a couple things really that our park system's been doing, that's very impressive. The Faulkner Park restrooms were completed in time for the Little League State Tournament that we just held a couple weekends ago. The tournament went well and received many compliments from the visitors as they came through Tyler. The Rose Complex construction has begun. The demolition ceremony for Harvey Hall will be on August 2nd at 11 o'clock a.m. Sledgehammers and hard hats will be provided by WRL for the ceremony, so come ready for swinging. We'll also have, we're trying to get bleachers set up, so if you want to stay after you take your own swing at the building, to be able to kind of sit and watch for as they do some more demolition, that'll be there and available. And so also, to save the day, for the Glass Recreation Center, we'll be celebrating the End of Summer Playground Program on Friday, August 6th with lunch for kids at noon. The fun will include free snow, ice snow cones, hamburger and hot dogs provided by the Tyler Police Department, as well as a color fun run that they're going to do and a water slide for all the campers to enjoy. And then just as, as y'all have been seeing in the news about the increase, especially with COVID-19, we've seen that in our own Smith County. The Net Health and Dr. DeHa, I did have a call with the mayor and myself, Chief, Chiefs Kobel and Toler and others, County Judge Moran and others, to talk about just the increase that we're seeing at our hospitals. That for us is always kind of one of the most essential pieces that we're seeing right now, probably the population of COVID patients has doubled at our local hospitals, and what can be done to start to curb that or making sure people understand the importance of vaccines that are available and out there. The rise is being attributed to the Delta variant spreading amongst the unvaccinated. Per the meaning, each organization will continue to share information about the safety of the vaccine, and Net Health is also soliciting testimonials from college-age kids to get vaccines as far as their outreach to UT Tyler, TJC, and Texas College over the next few weeks, and work on back-to-school messaging and opportunities for student teachers to receive vaccinations. We have also made sure that we've pushed out information to our employees so they'll know the opportunity to have free vaccinations if they so desire, and then also monitoring our own kind of as far as where we see COVID coming amongst our own employees to kind of, as we look at our own workforce, to make sure that that doesn't affect our ability to provide services to our citizens. You agree with that, Mayor?
Any comments for Ed?
I do, I do have one question for you. In that discussion, was there any, any part of the discussion about any advertising or promotional campaign to remind those that have not yet gotten their vaccine to please go ahead and do so?
We talked about that, especially trying to figure out how to target those that may be resistant to it, and that is the, the difficult piece. I think we are kind of left kind of still scratching our head at how do you, we have done quite a bit of advertising and promotion and make sure free vaccinations are there, and we'll continue to, especially through Net Health. But for those who are still kind of on the fence, you know, kind of pushing them off onto the more towards the vaccination route, that is still kind of a bit of a struggle that we, you know, ultimately at this point, what we can do is try to encourage, but the main thing is to make sure our hospitals are able to continue to have beds and available for those who are going for other reasons to the hospitals, which is our primary concern at this point, to make sure that our medical services, which we are the hub for East Texas, are there for all people, for those, both those with COVID and those needing services for other reasons.
Thank you. Yeah, the rise in rates is almost alarming, so thank you.
Any other comments for Ed? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.